It's 5:00 o'clock and I'll call the Tuesday, May 23 meeting of the City Council to order. And Madam Kirk, will you call our roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
This is Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Rowe?
Here.
Thank you.
We're pleased tonight to have a joint meeting between the City Council and our colleagues on the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission. And because you have more than two people, technically this is a meeting. Would you like to call your meeting to order?
Yes, I will go ahead and call the meeting in the Port and Industrial Commission to order and I'll go ahead and have a roll call. And I guess I'll do the roll call myself.
Right.
Edward Barham, I'm here. Captain Watkins?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Bento? Not here. Mr. McGuire?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Reinberg?
Here.
Mr. Toops? Not here. Mr. Wallace? Not here. I believe some of these fellows may be tied up in traffic, so...
There's a traffic team.
Here we go. Mr. Wallace, he is here.
Right over here.
We're here, all right.
So we do have a quorum. We've got five of them.
Well, why don't we break the ice with the introduction of First Counsel? We can do the same thing. We'll start with Elizabeth.
I'm Elizabeth Simmons. I've served on the council on and off since 2004. And in my day job, I own a travel agency.
Hi, I'm Lisa Lucas Burke. I'm newly elected to the council in 2016. I've worked with some of the PPIC members in my previous role as Chair of the Economic Development Authority. And in my day job, I'm Executive Director of Lewis Lodge Programs.
And I'm John Rowe.
That's all you're gonna say?
And I'm a newbie, too.
In his day job, he's mayor. I'm Page Cherry. I'm the Senator, as your Vice Mayor. I was elected to Portsmouth City Council in May of 2010. In my day job, I run what they call me known as the business sale for the Coast Guard, where I oversee the medical budget for 42 Coast Guard clinics.
Nathan Clark, I was just elected this past November. This is my fifth month serving on council. I have 29 years in the public safety field, which I'm currently employed in. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I guess we're introducing ourselves.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bill Moody. I was elected in 1998. And we tell in our career?
Day job.
Our day job. My day job is a semi-retired day job now. Worked for a select recycling and waste company, so... Ned, if you would, have your board...
Are we going this way now?
Yes, sir. It's up to you.
I'm Ned Barham. I'm Chairman of the Port and Industrial Commission. I've been on the Port and Industrial Commission since 2010, when it was reformulated. And I've been Chairman of the Commission since, I guess, 2014. I sort of lost track. My day job, I work for T. Parker Host Incorporated, which is a steamship agency and terminal operating company. Been with T. Parker Host for 37 years. 32 years on the agency side, and the last five years on the terminal operating side. And my area of responsibility is the Purdue Green Elevator. And I do the stevedore for Purdue, loading the ships for them.
Agreed.
George Watkins, retired Virginia pilot after 42 years. My day job is doing whatever my wife tells me to do.
I've been with PPIC for about a year now. My day job is that I am involved with seafarers' welfare and lead two organizations that help the seafarers that visit the ports. Host being one of the terminals that we visit and take those people to Walmart and around town and allow them to do some shopping. And then I'm also a commercial crabber.
Grant Reinerberg, I'm the newest member of the PPIC. I've been on board for four months now. In my day job, I am a career civil servant with the federal government and work for the Coast Guard on the national security side of the Coast Guard's mission.
Guy Wallace, I've been with PPIC for three years now. On my day job, I'm involved in domestic movement of international cargo. Been with Portsmouth now. We've celebrated our 20th anniversary. All 20 years we've been in Portsmouth working. We're continuing to grow. Started from scratch with no business in 1997. This year, we're doing right around $265 million in business. So we've been quite successful, and Portsmouth's been a big help for us as well. We appreciate being involved here.
Jim Toops. I've been involved with the PPIC for the last three years. And I own locally Surf Pro Portsmouth. Prior to that, I founded and built a $170 million business, which I sold to venture capital. Before, I wanted something smaller. Just different. But not so. Happy to help and want to help with both the ports and also the industrial side. How do we add jobs in Portsmouth?
Thank you. Well, on behalf of my colleagues on City Council... Oh, Jim. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. There was a train, and I had to divert from High Street and over to London, so I'm sorry. Jim Bento, I've been with PPIC, I think about since 2011, somewhere in there. Been with Ocean Marine here next door. We started as just a smaller company in Portsmouth. We leased from Tidewater Yacht. In 2002, we opened up this facility next door, Ocean Marine Yacht Center. And, you know, it's been a great run for, I guess, 15 years now over here. So we're very proud to be in Portsmouth. And we bring a global trade to Portsmouth. Our customers are global, and we bring a lot of transient yachts in, and they come in and be refurbished and spend quite a bit of money here. So we're really proud to be in Portsmouth. And we promote Portsmouth, Virginia, all over the world and all our advertising. Thank you very much.
Great. Well, again, on behalf of City Council, we're glad that you are taking time out of your busy schedule to be here tonight and meet with us. We have joint meetings with our major boards. And this is going to be informal, and I understand you might have a presentation that you want to...
Small presentation, just to sort of give everyone an idea and overview of what we're doing.
Good. And then from there will be open discussion. We don't have an agenda, per se, for this part of our meeting. So any questions, any comments, any discussion, I think, would be very, very beneficial.
Very well, very well. Okay, we're ready to start? Just wait. Okay. I think the banner says it all, especially for the PPIC. 90 miles of shoreline and 360 degrees of opportunity. And that's what we pretty much focus on. So let's just go ahead to the next slide if we can. And I know with these PowerPoints, everybody can read, but I'm just going to run through this real quick, because I think a lot of this really bears mentioning and bringing to light. PPIC was created by the Virginia General Assembly in 1954. I'm not real sure of this, but I believe it was initially created to run the Tidewater Terminal, which was the predecessor to the Portsmouth Marine Terminal. And of course, the Portsmouth Marine Terminal was handed over to the Virginia Port Authority, I think in the late '70s, with the port unification. And it became one of the three terminals operated by Virginia International Terminals, being PMT, Norfolk International Terminals, and Newport News Marine Terminals. So we are comprised of seven members, seven Commissioners. Unbelievably, all seven of us are here tonight. That doesn't normally happen.
And we're here this morning at 8:00.
Yes, all seven were here this morning. Usually, travel schedules and that type of thing, it makes it difficult to get a quorum sometimes. So I'm glad that all seven of us are here to meet this evening. Now, this is what's important. Our powers, again, just reading, we are able to acquire, own, lease, and dispose of property, acquire, construct, develop, maintain, and operate wharves, docks, and piers. Now, that's a little bit difficult now, because I think all of you know that most of our waterfront is taken now by either state or federal groups. But this is important. We're able to borrow money, incur debt, and issue bonds. And this is one of the reasons why the PPIC has been maintained throughout the years, even though we're not physically operating terminals now. I think if you read the charter, you'll find out also that we are able to levy tolls, but nobody really wants to talk about tolls. So leave that alone. We're able to acquire, construct, maintain, operate, commercial, manufacturing, government facilities. We can sell, convey, or lease those same facilities. And we're able to condemn property for public use. PPIC uses its powers, work closely with economic development to attract and retain businesses related to the maritime industry. That is our main focus, is to bring in businesses related to the maritime industry. We do have a huge maritime presence in this port. It's been said, I believe, that 1 in 10 jobs in the state can be tied to the waterfront here. So this is very important, and this is really our goal. I've already been through all of our Commissioners. Again, all of us are here, so I'm glad for that. We have two pieces of property that are under our current operation. This may be a little bit difficult to see, but I'll just try to explain what's going on. This first parcel here, it's actually two parcels. The School Board Operations Center, the former School Board Operations Center, which is just above that red arrow or underneath the red arrow there. We took over that a few years back, took it over from the School Board. And then just this past year, we purchased the Vane Brothers property, which is right next door. The idea behind this is that we can put these two parcels together eventually and have basically a 14-acre industrial site for development. A lot of this property right now is being used by the EDA for their superfund cleanup, which is basically involved with digging all the muck out of the Elizabeth River around that Atlantic Wood Industries site, putting all that fill back where our property is, putting a bulkhead in, and then eventually spreading all that back down so that we'll have a graded-out 14-acre site that will be marketable, hopefully, within the next couple of years. Next slide, please. Okay, this is our other property here, P.E.R. Properties. Back in 2010, the old Allied site was sold to P.E.R. Properties, which is operated by Jim Solomon's, who was big in the grain industry. Initial uses... He initially wanted to use this strictly for a granary. Over the years, he's come back to us and asked if he could use it for aggregate productions. As you can see here, CitiCo was amended in 2014 to allow for the concrete operations. In 2015, we extended the use permit. And then in 2016, we gave him a final permit to run that aggregate operation. The granary side of it, I think he's having a bit of a permitting problem right now. He wants to store his grain in warehouses, which is a little bit out of the ordinary for a grain elevator. So that's an ongoing issue. But in the meantime, the aggregate side of that facility is under construction now and should be up and operating fairly soon. But I need to get an update as to when he's actually going to be running that. But that's pretty much what we're looking at now, what we're watching. So if there's any questions on that, I'll try to answer them. That's it. Thank you.
Any questions? Well, Deborah, before you cut that off, can you bring page four back up?
Yes, sir.
Upriver from the Jordan Bridge and east of the Ridda, those piers. I attended a talk by Captain Scott Brown last week.
Okay.
And part of his presentation was a PowerPoint that had an aerial similar to that with a bubble line around those piers. And I asked him, that is Navy or property, what's the future? Does the shipyard have a strategic use in the future? And he said, no. That strategically, what lies north of the Jordan Bridge is strategically important for the shipyard. And he offered a comment that he saw that that's a possibility where the city and the shipyard could work together for some other use in the future. What are your thoughts about that?
I can tell you this, from the PPIC side, we've had our eyes on that parcel of land since, I guess, back 2010, when we first got together, especially Captain Watkins here. I sit right across the river at Purdue. I look over there every day, and I see basically nothing going on. I think the Navy SEALs are using a part of that property for storage of some of their equipment, and I see some operations on that. The Navy, at times, has talked about putting a parking garage over there. I'm glad to hear this, because if there's even a slight possibility that we could get in there, that's a prime piece of waterfront real estate that really we could do a lot with. So anything that we could do along those lines would certainly be fantastic.
In your opinion, are those piers usable?
The piers, as in the finger piers like that or not, but you knock those down, you have a marginal pier. You've got about 1,700, 1,800 feet of pier space that you could put a vessel there or barges or whatever. And that... You'd have to probably knock them down and go in, because it would impede the channel if you tried to put one of the big ships bow in there.
If you did knock those piers down, like Captain Watkins said, had 1,700, 1,800-foot of marginal dock space, you could easily fit a couple of ships in there and have all kinds of operations going on, whether it be bulk or break bulk. You could do containers. I don't think we'd want to compete with the Port Authority, VIT, on that type of thing. But all kinds of possibilities exist there.
Well, I think the Port Authority would be more than happy to help us develop that. I mean, they, you know, I mean, it's important. They know they're not going to get the property, but they'd be happy to help us develop it.
Right. They could market it, sure.
How much land would have to be cut out, do you think? Just roughly.
How much land would be cut out?
Yeah.
An upland piece is pretty substantial. The upland piece is pretty substantial. I think it's fine for any kind of cargo. I mean, you can't... It wouldn't be able to stay there, just stage there and then move out, but I think it'd be fine.
There's plenty of room there. I don't think you'd have to really cut in and take away the land. What you just have to do is take away those five piers and then turn that into a bulkhead, marginal wharf.
There's something we've been talking about for quite a few years.
We just have not found the right channels, I think, to get in with the Navy and on the Navy. Where do we go? Who do we talk to to be able to move that forward? And I think what you have heard would certainly help us out.
I think the first step might be with the shipyard commander, and we could set up a meeting.
Okay. I think that would be an ideal...
Is that agreeable with everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, then Deborah, let's...
How do you get there? Yeah, a car.
Oh, you go down Burton's Point Road.
Or Navy property?
No, on opposite side.
On the opposite. It's to the south of the shipyard. There's a road that goes back in there.
There is.
If you go to the Jordan Bridge, and just before you get on the bridge, you turn to the right, it'll take you down to Burton's Point Road. If you... As you're going down Burton's Point Road, you'll see this property on the left, and then our property, the School Board property, is on the right-hand side.
Is it designated as a city road? Or is it just a...
It is, but I believe it's only just a community road.
Yeah.
But I'm sure it could be wide.
I think if council would endorse this, I mean, we would love to... We've all been talking about it for a lot of years, and we'd love to pursue this. It's a big piece of property.
Would it transfer from government use to our own industrial use and for our revenue purpose, or would that be a shared...
That's the big question, and I think that's what...
Yeah, how are we going to get control of it?
You'd probably have to fall under the BRAC guidelines. If the Navy said they had no further need for it, then we would have to, I'm sure, go through all of the bureaucracy of petitioning to have it turned over to private use or city use.
There may be an opportunity, though, because when the Navy, when Shipyard was here several months ago, they're in desperate need of parking. And so essentially, we don't want to give up, you know, more property for federal uses. But if it was part of a swap where maybe we helped them and we got something out of it that enabled us to have available property that brings jobs to Portsmouth, that might be something worth thinking about.
And a big part of it's going to be what, you know, kind of liability they have in any kind of, you know, Phase 1 or Phase 2 type of thing. So that would be nice to have the Navy involved with that, because obviously, they could move that easier than the city could. So that would be a consideration as well, looking at Phase 1, Phase 2.
It breaks my heart to think they're going to put a parking lot on a piece of waterfront property down there.
I didn't hear that from Captain Brown. So how about if I set up a meeting between me and your Chair, Ned, and the City Manager, and whoever you think would be appropriate, Dr. Patton from your staff?
Yes, sir.
Captain Brown?
James Wright.
And we'll use that as the start of this conversation.
That'd be fantastic.
Absolutely.
Other discussions? Yes?
Just shared this morning, Grant told us, gave the PPIC meeting was this morning, and he gave a really nice presentation on his weekend at V.D...
VIDA.
VIDA Training at Virginia Tech. And he was there also with our three newest Economic Development Commissioners. So that was really nice that Don Scott, Kathy Revel...
And Anthony Hines.
Anthony Hines and we were all there together. And he was talking about some of the programs that he heard, they heard there. One of them was from the Timmins Group on economic development and turning over land, making land ready for economic development. We talked at the meeting this morning about that they would come in for nothing and putting them together with the EDA for this presentation. And maybe we'll make it available to even council members if they'd like to attend. I think it might be good for everybody.
I had the opportunity last week, spent two days at Virginia Tech. And the presentation that struck me the most was the Timmins Group. And really, the crux of the presentation, it was multi-hour, but it was what are... You know, what do sites need to look like for prospective businesses? And how quick is the industry moving? And, you know, 30- to 90-day, 60-day mark, I mean, businesses are making decisions on sites. And so, you know, to position ourselves as a city, both from the EDA perspective and PPIC, to me, this really hit home the most, thinking about the, you know, what we have potentially, what does it need to look like, what are the costs involved, and all of the various, you know, preparation requirements. So, you know, the multi-hour presentation, to do 30 minutes, I guess, you know, Ms. Simmons said, he'd be willing to come down and to do that for us. And I think it was very valuable. And I'm sure that my EDA colleagues also that were there found it the same, so highly recommend it.
So the thought is a joint meeting with you all, council, and EDA, is that...
Well, this morning, we said EDA and PPIC, but I'm now thinking, maybe we let them have the joint meeting and let council members know when it will be, if they can attend, if they're interested in attending. Unless you want to have us all together officially.
I don't see any problem with that. What do you all think? We all here at the same time and...
I'd be right at home, so...
Those groups already meet on Tuesdays at 8:00 in the morning, so we figured we could
combine some Tuesday and get them together in the not-too-distant future.
All right. Is that agreeable?
Yes. Fine with that.
Okay.
Sure.
Two tasks. How can we help you all?
Mr. Mayor, I think what you and the City Council did on the 8th of May, going out on the spirit of Norfolk and attending the arrival of the 13,000-container ship, Costco Development, did more for this city, to let people know in the maritime industry that you're really interested than anything that's been done in 25 years. I didn't go to the 12:00 meeting that you had, that was for the celebrities, but I'm sure you presented them some kind of plaque there to welcome them here. And I had the pleasure of going with Councilman Clark and Councilman Burke over to the Virginia National Gateway and to see that operation. And I could go on for about 20 minutes, but I'll just say thank you for what you're doing here. I mean...
Being at the head table at the VMA Bank Lead and then you went to the other meetings, you went to the State of the Port and all that, and to see our council members doing things like that helps us a lot, because then we talk to our peers in the industry, and they know that you're watching. That makes a huge difference to us. So we appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Well, not to wear out this phrase, but I think the future is bright for Portsmouth as it relates to ports and the maritime industry.
I think the main thing that the maritime... They've heard me say this so many times. I think the main thing the maritime industry has to do, we have to come out and sell ourselves. We have to let people know what we're doing. I want to ask one question. How many people know what a TEU is? If you do, raise your hand.
He told me.
TEU. That's a 20-foot equivalent unit, and that's how ships are sized. If a ship will carry 13,000 TEUs, that means it'll carry 13,000 20-foot containers or 7,500 40-foot containers. That's a lot of boxes. Now, most of you people, when you're on the road and you get behind one of those trucks, all you can say is, my God, I wish you'd get out of the way. Well, the way to equate that is, tonight, when you go home, you take your clothes off, you put everything that's made in the United States in one pile, and everything that's made foreign in another pile. And you'll see why those boxes are here. That's it.
Point well made.
Well, thank you again for taking time out of your busy schedule and having yet another meeting on this Tuesday.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for what you do.
This is a great idea to get everybody together like this, and I want to see it continue.
Okay, well, we got two homework assignments.
Yes, we do.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We'll give you a moment. Actually, Mallory has...
She has.
She has all the information.
Thank you. Thank you. Nothing tomorrow.
We should have a phone... Good seeing you, George.
How you doing?
All the members.
Oh, for them, yeah, we got that.
Nice to see you again.
Buy someone there, won't see you for nothing, pretty much.
This brings us to Council Liaison Reports. And why don't we start with you? We're at Council Liaison Reports. We'll start with you.
I think my PPIC report's been done. EDA has nothing new to report, and military affairs, not to be repetitive, but we are excited this Thursday to host the Secretary of Veterans Affairs at our Military Affairs Committee Meeting, General Meeting. And of course, this coming Monday is Memorial Day, and so at 10:00 a.m., we will step off the 133rd Annual Memorial Day Parade, 10:00 a.m., rain or shine, the longest continuously operating Memorial Day Parade in America. Don't shake your head.
Which one is that?
No.
133?
133.
Philadelphia got the longest. I said that at National League of Cities, and I was corrected by a council person from Philadelphia that told me they had the longest and we had the second.
Tell them we got it.
One of the longest.
Yeah, one of the longest.
One of the longest continuously operating Memorial Day Parades in America. And that will be followed this year by a short... will be followed this year by a short memorial ceremony in the courtyard at High End Court at the Cultural Center for all of the fallen military folks. You'll remember the last couple of years, that short event has been about Vietnam lost, but we have passed the 50-year mark on Vietnam, so now it will just be in memory of all the fallen from all conflicts.
Thank you. Bill?
Oh, yes, me. Okay. With the Port of Redevelopment Housing Authority, they're still in the process of seeking their executive director, but we're hoping that they're narrowing down their options very soon, so we should be looking to find out their decision in the coming months. One big thankful, they wanted to thank the council on the money, the $39,000 that was deployed to them in the budget, and I will be pleased to report that the CDB grant that we gave them in the amount of $39,544 will be used to help them with case management, job development, credit repair, personal development classes, Home Buyers Club, GED classes, childcare assistance, and transportation assistance. So they've taken that money and going to do some really great things with that. They're almost done with all of their renovations on the homes at Swanson Homes. There are only five tenants that are still out of their apartments, and everyone should be due, they said, by the end of this month to either moving back into their Swanson Home Apartments or either at the Lincoln, Dale's Home, Lincoln Apartments as well. I did attend also my first meeting with the stock organization today, and that was very interesting. One thing that occurred for them that they're really proud to announce is that they received accreditation, and they're the only community action agency in this area to achieve accreditation, so they're really proud about that. So they're going to be sending some information on that coming soon. They also moved their office from the Almeida Road to the Air Rail Road location, so that's where the new administrative offices will be housed, and that's where our meetings will be. They're also looking to host their annual fundraiser, which will be a golf tournament on Friday, August 18th. So as I get more information, I'll let you know, and if you want to get a team together, let me know so that you can play.
Where are they on the development of the Cradock, former Cradock High School?
They mentioned, I think they're on hold with that. They spoke about that last meeting they had, a gentleman with the Ryan Homes, and we didn't get any new information, but I think there's some financing that they're trying to work through before they can move forward with that.
So where does that put the city? Because I believe two out of four of those parcels are city-owned properties.
They mentioned, because they were going to build, they were building some apartments on some of those, I think that was, I'm not sure, the street that they were going to build those apartments on, but they weren't able to move forward with the financing. I think they built two, and they weren't able to get sales for them, so they had to halt that with that. But you're talking about at the Cradock site with the Ryan Homes. I think they're waiting on financing for them, and I don't know how the city plays a part into that.
At our next meeting, can we get an update on that, because there's some significant city involvement with that project?
Did the closing occur on the 28th of April?
You want to speak?
How do we get all the information for our next meeting?
That'll be good. We'll be ready.
And just have a report on...
We have it.
They're due to come and meet with us as well, too, at one of the next meetings. So we are scheduled for the next meeting.
Well, did the closing occur?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, there was a closing scheduled for April 25th. There is a discussion with regard to the development and financing. There have been some due diligence issues, but at this point, the project is still expected to go forward. In all likelihood, before we get back to the next meeting, the project is probably going to go forward. But there was some hangups with the April, I think, 25th actual closing.
All right. Well, let's do it. The information, if they look like they're going to close before our next meeting, send us an update.
Okay.
And we'll put it on the next meeting anyway, just to make sure that we all understand the status.
That's acting green.
As Lisa said, nothing new from Economic Development Authority, and you've seen the results of the, thank you, which hadn't been against us our last meeting, the meeting on the first Tuesday, but you've seen the results of our patch, you know, they had the first one that the Wendy's is coming to us. So that was a great thing, and they were related that we were able to do that, the whole planning staff and the planning commissions related that we were able to do that, to make that go forward. Another thing, from personnel, you all have your evaluation forms. If you could get those back, you can just put in my box at so by our next meeting, and Deborah sent you a note to poll you about coming together to do. So respond to her so we can get that set up and get that moving.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, since the last report, we did have a meeting of the Parking Authority. One of the things we were discussing is the county street garage. We're waiting on some more information, still in the planning stage of that. Upcoming projects, there has to be some repairs done to the police basement on the other side, because that's still being utilized, and that also is still the Sally Port for the jail, so it is used daily, transporting inmates to and from court, as well as, you know, police department bringing in, you know, detainees. Also, looking at redoing part of the floor here in the Civic Center and basement. It's all being done for safety reasons. Other update was, I spoke before about the Court Street near the library, where it was totally free parking. They're looking at doing now, we're going to go to two-hour parking for turnover.
What was that?
Court Street in front of the library, because what they were found is, since it was totally free parking, somebody would come there and park, and they'd be there all day, so there is no turnover. So we're going to go with a two hours. So what they're looking at is utilizing the poles that already existed from the previous meters to extend them up, to put the new signs on them. Also, they're going to put the new signs in the water street garage, the visitor spaces. They're going to limit that to two hours, because we were getting complaints that same thing, even people that had monthly spaces were parking in those and leaving their vehicle there all day, not getting turnover. So those signs are in the process, and they will be installed when they get them. One of the other interesting things we discussed was with the new Waterside District open, the impacts on our parking in downtown, as people are going to come here and park and travel by ferry across the river. So we're looking at it, we're going to try to be strategic, and possibly looking at event-type parking in our garages, where we do want to make it attractive for people to park on our side, knowing that they still have to pay for the ferry, but they don't have to pay for the toll. So we're going to have to look and see what the parking rates are in Norfolk as opposed to ours. And also, you know, those people are coming in, we would also like them to stop by and visit some of our businesses in the city, but we can also, you know, utilize that parking issue to our advantage. So that was the only meeting that I've had since the last update.
Regional jail?
We have not had a meeting since the last time, so I haven't, I don't have anything to report from there.
Dr. Whitaker?
Just the school board expressed through the superintendent, great disappointment over the vote by council not to fully fund the budget, and also a concern with the breakdown in the relationship that had been established with the city manager. It appears that the last negotiations that were held with the school board were done more by you, Mayor, and so that was some concern, that it was more negotiating from your end than it was from the city manager's end, which had been the prior relationship that had been established with the board. So hopefully, I don't know how that would be restored, but there is some significance of concern, considering that it was an announcement about the poverty task force issue, and with not funding education, that sends a very negative message about the sincerity of addressing poverty.
Thank you. You had a briefing last night from Kevin Page on the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, which really covered the HRTPO, and the HRT meeting is this week with the adoption of their annual budget for the next fiscal year. Any other liaison reports?
Since you raised the HRTAC issue, we received the email from Dr. Patton in regards to clarifying the issue of tolling. I think that needs to be expressed, because what you stated in your email was not what I thought I heard mentioned. I thought that it was said that, based on the General Assembly passage of legislation, that the only way, the only new tolls would be on the HOV additional lanes. But from what your email is saying is that the General Assembly could vote to toll the existing lanes, and that's not, that's not what I thought I heard last night.
Go ahead, Dr. Patton.
But I, in meeting with Mr. Baldwin, sent to you all, members of council, clarification that the existing lanes that are existing right now, and we were dealing with the tunnel and the extension of two additional lanes, the new lanes that are the hot lanes that will be coming in will be told. The existing lanes can only be told if it goes back to the General Assembly to toll the existing lanes. I'm going to use the word like grandfather. Those that are there are not told, will not be told unless it goes back to the General Assembly. All of the new hot lanes that were presented and speaking of, they will be told lanes.
There's another way to state this, too, that any existing road, whether it's a bridge or a road, can only be told by an act of the General Assembly. And it's my understanding from HRTAC that they don't intend to ask to do that for the four existing lanes at the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, that the only thing that will be told are the new lanes and the new tube.
So the governor in Norfolk has the power that the previous governor, McDonnell, had to do that.
So hot lanes. That's the difference.
Only that, the ERC or any other private or public-private partnership can't enact a told.
I think one of the consequences from the ERC contract is that the General Assembly said, "We need to be in charge," which is a good thing, and if there's going to be a told, we'll levy the toll. And so it did sound confusing last night, after Kevin got into a discussion about the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, that the whole thing would be told. It's only the new bridge lanes and the new tubes that will be told. And as he said last night, that the new tube will be bigger, taking bigger trucks. So a person coming up either has a choice of going in the slow lane, free, or going in the fast lane without paying the toll.
Well, I was clear, I think you was clear on saying that it will only be the new additional lanes that will be told. What I was concerned with was the fact that I thought he was indicating that existing lanes could not be told based on the new legislation, but that's not the case.
That's what we said.
That is the case.
That is the case.
No, no, you just said it can be told by an act of the General Assembly.
They, and they, and he expressed, that's not going to happen.
I mean, I don't know what to expect, because you don't know what a General Assembly might do. So I'm just saying, it's not that it is an absolute that they cannot be told. It was presented last night as if the existing lanes cannot be told. What your email clarified was, thank you for, is that they can be told by an act of the General Assembly.
That is in the language, yes.
Right, right.
But there's no desire locally within the region to seek that action by the General Assembly.
Is present, General Assembly.
Or is present, the region? All right. I think we all understand. All right. We have a need to go into closed session. Is there a motion to discuss?
Need to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7, the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating process of the city, specifically regarding Virginia International Gateway Incorporated versus City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Portrush Circuit Court Case CL16001427-00, and Virginia International Gateway Incorporated versus City of Portsmouth, Virginia, Portrush Circuit Court Case Number CL15002813-00, and pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711A6 and 8.29, for the purpose of discussing the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, and the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including the terms or scope of such contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city, specifically regarding a public service contract.
Second? Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
Madam Kirk, would you call and roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simms?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are in closed session, and those people not involved in this meeting...